All right, let's go ahead and get started with our city council today. We want to appreciate everyone that showed up today. It's kind of exciting day. And so we will go with Council Mendenhall will offer us a prayer.
Our dear heavenly father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for the opportunity to gather together and discuss the affairs of this great city. We're grateful for all the residents, all the citizens that that live here and that love this city and help to take care of it. We're grateful for all of those that serve in our armed forces and our military and our first responders and the opportunity this weekend to celebrate them and their sacrifice. Please watch over and protect them as they're in harms way and their families as well. Please have they spirit to be with us this meeting tonight that we'll be able to make clear and conscious decisions to continue the progress of our great city. We're grateful for all of our blessings and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I've asked Councilman Scobes to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As you notice, we're missing one of our council members. Councilman Gordon is on vacation with his family, so we'll excuse him tonight. Public comment. Anyone from the public would like to come and address us at this time? You're welcome. Wow, seeing none? Tyler, are we ready for those guys? Hershey?
Do you want to come in first?
I don't care. If they're still doing their thing, we can give them a little more time. We can go through our council comments.
However you want to do it, Mayor.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
They're here. I mean, they're all.
They're ready to go.
They're still signing, but.
All right, well, let's do our council comments. That'll kill a little time. Let's start with Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything at this time.
How about Councilman Mendenhall?
Thanks, Mayor. Just again thankful for the Veterans Committee, the the American Legion and everybody that put on the program yesterday for Memorial Day. Just awesome and awesome to see seems like the whole city out to celebrate and also remember all of our loved ones at the cemetery. So, great job to the crew for having it ready to go and keeping it so well kept. It was fun to see a whole lot of friends and neighbors and family there. Tonight for the Spanish Fork Active and Healthy Minutes, we have some folks from the Drug Prevention Coalition that are here. Are you guys here?
They're here.
They're somewhere out here?
They're actually around by the door.
Okay, all right.
They're frightened of the crowd.
Yeah.
We've started. Thank you, Seth. Way to be on time. But that's on record for you to say that.
City manager just shows up. Yeah. Susan, we're ready for you.
Ready for you.
Yep. No, that's great. So Susan Chapman with with our Active and Healthy Committee. June 19th coming up is our health fair again. We're very excited to to host and and not have it be canceled from COVID like it was last year. But Susan's here to to introduce some some folks from for the Drug Prevention Coalition and we're excited about this announcement as well.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that go on in our community, right? We have a lot of issues in our community and also in our state. And one that we're very aware of that ties in a lot with mental health is drug and alcohol prevention. And I'll introduce these two who are quite remarkable and you might you might recognize them from from your community and from your neighborhoods. But before I do that, I just want to talk about a grant that we got and we've mentioned it a little bit in here. But we got a good sized grant a little while ago for our community to focus on tobacco and e-cigarette use and to lower and reduce that. And we've we've partnered with NIBO School District to work with them and we've had a lot of success with that and to bring we we focus on protective factors, increasing protective factors in youth and high-risk youth. And that's been something that we've worked on. We've we've done a program called Why Try, which is a resiliency program. And also, we've been working with our Love and Logic program, which has been awesome. So, thanks for your support in that. And I'm going to introduce. So, this is Bonnie Hargraves. I've known her for a while. She's from Spanish Fork City. And she works with Utah County Health Department. And Carl Hansen, who's a professor at BYU in public health. And I'm not exactly sure what your title is right now, but it's probably way up there because he's been he's been there for a while. And they're both really connected to the community, really connected to this issue. And I'm just going to let them continue with the conversation of what they're what they're doing here. I also sit on the Coalition and I'm not as faithful as going every single week, but or every single month, but there's a lot of great things happening.
Well, thanks for giving us just a couple minutes. We're here tonight to just alert you of, and I think Bonnie, you have some ammo for them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, to alert you of the Utah Valley Drug Prevention Coalition. It's a group that's been in existence for many years. I've been at Spanish Fork 16 years and it's been in existence as long as I've been here and I've been on that coalition. And basically, it's a group that's representing our community to fight drug abuse and and drug use amongst adolescents and adults here in here in our backyard. And the materials you're getting right now, there's some good information in there as well as a vision and a mission of the Coalition. But there's also a little bit of data in there, Spanish Fork specific data. We thought that you might be interested in some of that. The bottom line, if you were to if you were to look at all that data is, you know, Spanish Fork does a really good job. We we are strong. But when it comes to adolescent substance abuse, you know, in my opinion, no use is good use when it comes to substances. And so, we still have some room for improvement. This coalition works countywide and it takes on some of the big pain points and the big issues here in our community. But here in Spanish Fork, there's probably some stuff that needs to take place here as well. And so, one of one of the things that this coalition does is pays close attention to the data and where the pain points are in county. But there's not really too much going on in individual communities looking at those data unless there's a coalition at the community level. Those are typically called around the camp around the county, the Communities That Care coalitions, okay, the CTCs. And I don't believe Spanish Fork has one of those right now, but it'd be an awesome model to think about so Spanish could look at their own data and develop evidence-based solutions to addressing substance abuse. When it comes to substance abuse, we absolutely know what works. Research that's come out of the University of Washington is very clear on what the risk and protective factors are. And we also know what works to address it. And so, these coalitions are absolutely critical in in working on these problems. Bonnie, am I missing anything? Why don't you come up and take over?
So, just a little bit more about our coalition. It's a group of, well, lots of different people and professionals are in our group, including we have pharmacists, we have BYU, we have concerned citizens. And our our goal is to prevent substance abuse including alcohol among youth. As we all know, youth are our future, right? So, it's it's really an important issue. One, one, my area of expertise is with opioid prevention. And we know that you have all approved to have naloxone available at your library, which is awesome. That's like a huge thumbs up. And we're actually working with other cities in the county to try and follow this model to so that they can distribute naloxone. We do have a, we're offering a class for residents just in July. We're on the calendar for in July to distribute naloxone and have a training there at the library, which is great. But we've done all kinds of activities to really help get the message out and to educate these youth on the dangers of substance abuse. In your packets also, there are Dropbox locations, which is something that we really focus on, proper drug disposal. We've done drug takeback events where people can bring their unused and expired medications to get rid of them. But really, we just wanted you to know that we're here to act as a resource and we're we're here to partner together. You know, we work closely with Susan and she has helped us with a lot of different events and things. So, thank you for hearing us. Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, but I'm sure we can go right through Mike here and Susan. We sure appreciate you guys being there.
Thanks for having us.
You're in good hands with Susan. Thanks.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you coming. Susan's obviously been on the forefront of this stuff for our Active and Healthy team and appreciate her correspondence with with our police department and in working with this as well. So, thank you so much for coming. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Karen and Stacey, I'm gonna, let's bring these guys in. Okay, let's have the the girls come in. We had a great event happen here this past week. Our Spanish Fork High School girl softball team took state. And also, our boys, Spanish Fork High School, took state. And so, the boys, I called, they played Maple Mountain and I called their athletic director and I said, I guarantee that a Spanish Fork City boys high school team's going to take state this year. Since both of them are in Spanish Fork and playing each other. So, that was pretty cool. So, we're gonna bring in the girls and recognize them. Come on in. Come and stand right here in front. Oh, yeah. There's only 10 million people out there in TV land watching you. So, don't be nervous at all. Yeah, you know, you can come and stand up. All the team, come on in here. Natalie? Come on up here to the podium. There you go. There you go. Great. We just want to recognize this awesome feat that you guys did. Natalie?
Yes.
Come on up here. And I want you first to tell us a little about about your season, your record. And then I'm going to have you introduce each one of these. So, I hope you know their names.
I don't. Our record was 32 and 1.
Pretty awesome.
14 and 0 in region. And we all, we won region. We won state, of course. That's why we're here. And we also won academic for region. The state? The state for state.
That's what I said.
So, it was pretty awesome.
That was great.
Really proud of them. I think our grade point average was 3.89? 8? I think it was 3.87. Yeah, 3.87.
Eesh. I didn't know it went that high.
Yeah. I don't either.
Yeah, so what we'll do is when you tell them, let's introduce yourself and let's say your parents' names.
Yes.
Because we'll know your parents more than we know you kids.
So true. So, I'll just let them introduce themselves. That's what's great. Yeah, have to hear them. Yeah.
Then you guys can just do, just kind of keep going around and tell who you are.
I'm Peyton Hall.
I'm Tatum Hall.
And our parents are Shelley and Andy Hall.
You're right.
I'm Avery Sapp and my parents are Krista and Damian Sapp.
I'm Jamie Davis and my parents are Amy and Justin.
Right.
I'm Addie Nelson and my parents are Tara and Tyler Nelson.
I'm Trinity Benson and my parents are Mario and Valerie Benson.
I'm Cameron Buchanan. My parents are Natalie and Brock Buchanan.
I'm Brooklyn Pintar.
And I'm Emory Pintar.
And our parents are Nick and Jamie. Pintar.
I'm Ashlyn Losi and my parents are Matt and Candace Losi.
I'm Haley Wilson and my parents are Keith and Janay Wilson.
I'm Elise Archileta and my parents are Stacy and Alex Archileta.
I'm Lucy Evans and my parents are Bobby D. and Joe Evans.
I'm Taylor Reed. My parents are Gordon and Rachel Reed.
I'm Oakley Beckstrom and my parents are J.C. and Waylon Beckstrom.
I'm Kylie Mitchell and my parents are Jennifer and Brian Mitchell.
I'm Aubrey Leonard. My parents are Jeremy and Kami Leonard.
We got everybody? All right. You want to come up and introduce your coaches?
Absolutely. You guys have to come up here.
Yes, you do. Good heavens. You guys have to introduce yourselves.
This is Kayla Jones and Jess Seifert and Whitney Carson.
Great.
And I coached all of them also. And now they're all on my staff. How awesome is that?
That is awesome.
That means I'm really old, is what I just did. I just aged myself. And we would also like to present you each with a ball that all the girls have signed.
That is cool.
So, you can put that on your shelf or somewhere.
Yeah, it'll go in my trophy case.
Thank you.
That is awesome. Thank you. Gosh, you guys even know how to speak, writing your names. That's awesome.
Yeah, we got one for Councilman Gordon right here.
Yeah, right here. Whoa, we need one more right there. Okay. All right, let's give these guys a good round. What? Oh, wait, wait, timeout. Let's get a picture. Everybody turn around, back up right here against here. Turn around. Yeah, crowd in here. Yeah, there you go. Hey, look at Tyler.
Three, two, one. Here, let's see if we can get one more for this.
Take a whole bunch. All right, all right, now you can come and shake her hands. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Congratulations. Way to represent. Thank you. All right. All right, we're pretty excited for that. The way they represented Spanish Fork and not only on the field, but in academics. That's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. All right, let's bring in the baseball team. Ah, look at that. Just come and line up in front here. Just don't drop it.
Yeah, don't drop it. So, you can come right over to here and then you can fill in all that space.
Oh, my gosh, look at you guys. There you go. Hang on. Oh, perfect. Yeah.
Looks good right there.
There you go. So, I noticed you turned that, you're gonna do a little dance. I noticed every time you go into the dugout, you got a little dance you do there. I like that. Yeah, I want that. See, I want that. All right. All right, I know Coach Gub is in Cancun, so who's going to represent the coach? Come on.
So, Mayor Leifson, Council, as Spanish Fork High School baseball, we're happy to present you with the 2001 5A Baseball State Championship.
That's awesome. You guys are awesome.
We get to keep the trophy. Coach Gub went to Disneyland.
Yeah.
But we'll pass it around. 2021. Going into the state tournament, we were 16 and 9. We had a lot of ups and downs. But I am so proud of this group of kids for teaching us all the life lesson of keep working hard and never giving in. They went 5-1 in the tournament and we beat rivals Salem, Maple Mountain, both of those guys twice. We beat beat Tempanogus, who has been in Achilles Hill. And so, I'd just like to present the team to you, Mayor.
All right. I'll tell you what. That's awesome, guys. What what was nice about this is I had to go to Idaho for the weekend to keep my wife happy. But on my big screen, little phone here, I watched every game. You know, I said, you guys can go do whatever you want. But I went out on the porch of my in-laws or brother and sister-in-laws and watched the game, every one of them. So, I was excited for you guys. Nice job. All right, what we want to do is we want each of you to come up and tell us your name and who your parents are. So, start right over here and come on over.
Hunter Rasserson and my mom and dad are Brig and Jen Rassperson.
Great.
Ethan Romero. My dad's Matt Romero. My mom's Marcy Romero.
I'm Blair Nielsen. My parents are Damian and Crystal Nielsen.
I'm Weston Corliss and my parents are Cody and Nicole Corliss.
I'm Bridger Hall. My parents are Ryan and Brooke Hall.
Boston Bradford and my parents are Cindy and Blake Bradford.
Morley Bennett and my parents are Mike and Kathy Bennett.
Walker Evans and my parents are Jamie and Morgan Evans.
Jaden Mc Houston. My parents are Chad and Lindsay Mc Houston.
I'm Ty Creer. My parents are Clay and Carolyn Creer.
I'm Brighton AC and my parents are Adam and Kami AC.
I'm Jase Gunter. My parents are Cam and Jamie Gunter.
I'm Zach Dart. My parents are Kyle and Ally Dart and my grandparents are Rod and Ann Dart.
Hey, we like you.
I'm Will Dart and my parents are Kyle and Ally Dart as well.
Kaden Cloward. My parents are Aaron and Heidi Cloward.
I'm Seth Hall. My parents are Billy and Ingrid Hall.
Ethan Door. Parents are David and Nikki Door.
Dax Bringers. My parents are Phil and Heather Bringers.
Seth Argyle and my parents' names are Brian and Melissa Argyle.
Michael Dalton and my parents are Derek and Melanie Dalton.
Ian Oplenop and my parents are Lynn and Millie Oplenop.
My name's Caleb Robertson. My parents are Brian and Lisa Robertson.
Colton Bennett and my parents are Will and Shannon Bennett.
Brody Duval and then my parents are Lindsay and Nate Duval.
All right. Coaches, come up here. Let's introduce them. Get up here.
I'm Matt Romero, assistant coach.
Who's your parent?
My parents are Randy Romero and Neil and Susan Taylor.
And Randy and I went to school together.
Yep, good guy.
He's an old classmate. He's a great guy. Yes.
Chad Mc Houston, assistant coach.
Blair Lucas and my wife is Sarah and I've got two little boys, Everett and Rafe. And they're the reasons why I get to coach.
There you go. Cool.
Mayor Aaron Cloward and I'm an assistant coach. And we'd like to present you with a ball that each of the kids have signed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna get a picture. So, everybody come right up here and look that way. Yeah, come on in there. Get that trophy. Yeah, we'll hold it right here. There you go.
Guys, ready? Look right here. Three, two, one. All right, let me get one more.
With your game face on.
Three, two, one. Got it.
All right, guys. Whoa, whoa, you're not done yet. We wanted you to come shake your hands. Just kind of shake your hand. We wanted you to come shake your hands, just kinda shake your hands and move all around and make a circle going around. Yeah, start right here. Congratulations. Nice job. There you go. Good job. Nice job. Nice job. Congratulations. Congratulations.
What's up, guys?
Congratulations. Nice job. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Way to represent.
Congrats, guys.
All right, I can't imagine why.
Congrats, you guys.
Nice job.
Congrats.
Hey, Aaron, Aaron, before you leave, let me tell a little note about Aaron. I used to live up next door to him when, when he was a little kid. He'd come up and knock on my door and say, can Steve come out and play? And I'd take him out there and I'd whip him, wouldn't I? See you, guys.
Thanks.
All right. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna do. I got it. All right, that's pretty awesome. That just shows you what kind of caliber of youth we have here in Spanish Fork. And we're excited for them. And it was pointed out that, you know, the three, three teams that were in the state tournament that took the first three spots, Spanish Fork, Maple Mountain, Salem Hills, they used to all come to this one school here in this town. And so, pretty amazing the talent we have right here in our city. But, so it's pretty cool. All right, let's continue on with our council comments. Let's go to Stacy.
Okay, I want to start off by also congratulating four young women on being crowned Miss Spanish Fork in their three attendance from Saturday night. We had a great show, and Miss Haisley Healy will serve as Miss Spanish Fork for 2021. Her first attendant is Aubrey Brower. Her second attendant is Candace Hewlin, and third attendant is Madison Anderson. And we had them jump right into it Monday morning, and they were at the Memorial Day presentational, presentation at the cemetery. And they're just darling and excited to serve the community. So we're, we're thankful for their time, and also I'd like to thank all of those people who sacrificed to put such a great program together at our cemetery on Memorial Day. It was really special, and thank you for the time putting up the crosses and putting the speakers together, everything, it just came together really well. And that's all I have.
Great. All right, councilman Scobes.
Uh, Mayor. I didn't think I'd get this choked up. Um, for twelve years, almost twelve years now, I've had the great opportunity to be able to serve, uh, serve the city of Spanish Fork. Um, for those that, that aren't aware, I'm, I'm a member of the Army National Guard as well. And for twelve years, uh, three terms, I've had in the back of my, the back of my mind, the, the worry and concern, but certainly the, the fortitude and the desire to continue to serve my country, realizing that, that at any point I could be called up and deployed. I was fortunate that after my last deployment in 2009 to Afghanistan, I was able to serve for almost twelve years now as a city councilman. Uh, and so Mayor, at this time, I'd like to announce that, announce that I will be deployed, um, starting July first, uh, is when my deployment starts. Uh, just a little different this time, though. Uh, not, not Iraq nor Afghanistan, uh, but to Washington DC. Uh, I've been selected to represent the state of Utah. Uh, I serve currently as a Colonel. Uh, but to serve the state of Utah, uh, represent the state of Utah, excuse me, at the Inter-American Defense, Defense College, uh, better known as the National War College, uh, representing the state of Utah to, uh, study there, receive a master's degree in Strategic Studies in National Defense. A wonderful opportunity for, for that part of my, uh, my service, to be able to serve, continue to serve the country. And most, most, most near and dear to my heart to be able to serve, um, serve our youth, serve our community especially. That's, uh, that's what I will miss the most. Uh, so at this time, Mayor, I, I formally make the announcement of my resignation um, from the city council effective the fifteenth, wasn't it? Yeah, uh, effective the fifteenth, uh, after that city council meeting in two weeks. For those wa, watching at home, there are procedures, there's state law that govern, uh, that govern the, a, a member of the council that deploys and, and a vacancy in the position. I won't go into much more detail, not, there's anything super secret squirrel, um, but, uh, there's business to attend to, uh, and I'm sure I'll cry plenty in my last meeting uh, in a couple of weeks anyway, so, um, just grateful for the opportunity to... I love Spanish Fork. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a tough one. That's a tough one, and we appreciate that. Uh, you've got one more meeting with us, and so, uh, we'll save all our tears for that one, so. Thank you, thank you. Uh, just a few things, Tyler, if you want to pop them up. I just wanted to say, uh, reiterate what's been said about, uh, the great, uh, program we had, the Veterans Memorial Program yesterday. I'll tell you what, Colonel Dunn gave an awesome speech, and, uh, this is something I always love going to see. As many people come out, but as you see, the, the planters filled, you know, uh, all the flags are put out there. Uh, it's totally amazing. The people that come out, the volunteers that come out to, to place those flags, those crosses, and the poppies tied to them. Uh, I had Mayor Frost from American Fork text me. He said he was at our cemetery last Saturday, or the Saturday before, and he said, he said, what a beautiful cemetery you guys have. And, uh, we knew that, and, and the citizens know that, and everybody that comes to our cemetery knows that. And so, uh, my hat's off to all the volunteers and all the, uh, the veterans, and also those who take care of our cemetery. They do an awesome job and make that to be one of the best cemeteries in the state, if not the nation. So that's all I've got. Let's move on to, uh, Spanish Fork 101, water supply.
Councilwoman Beck made the suggestion that, uh, we give an update to the city on how we are doing water-wise with the drought going on. And, uh, uh, there are two individuals in Public Works that do a lot to track and make sure that, uh, we have enough water and that we are doing some programs that help us to conserve water, and so I've asked them to come up. It's, uh, Marlo Smith and Josie Paxton. And, uh, we'll start with Marlo, and then, and with Josie.
Hello, there. I, when I saw that I was going to be here with the baseball and the softball team, I would have been much more comfortable talking about their stats, their record this year. Feel a little bit more confident with that. But I'm, I'm excited to go into our water supply. And I've got a couple pictures here, a few pictures of where our water supply actually comes from. Before I worked for the city, I don't know if I ever realized that you just didn't turn on the tap and that's where your water comes from. There's a little bit more to it than that. So our first picture here is the Strawberry Reservoir, where quite a bit of our ULS and our SVP water comes from. Then we also have our, our springs, we have multiple springs throughout the city. This is just an example of one. We have Spanish Fork River, and then we also have multiple wells throughout the city. And this is just one example of one of our wells. And I didn't, I'm sorry. Okay. So this is the example that I have tonight that I want to go over first is our snowpack report. So as you can see, we have our average snowpack for, it's been taken for over many, many years. And this is the average of what it is. As you can see, 2019, we were quite a bit above average. 2020, we were below average. 2021, again, we are below average. Um, the only thing about this graph is that it's a little misleading because 2019 does show that it was such a high year, it was above-average year. The problem with this is what it doesn't show is that 2017 and 2018 were drought wells, drought years as well. So we didn't have enough in 2017 and 18 that made 19 very impactful for these last two years that have been extremely drought years. Um, we would need a few more years, like 2019, to saturate our ground, fill the reservoirs, fill the river, then we would feel a little bit more confident if we had a drought year in the, you know, just after that. So this is our acre feet in water. This is what we have in our well water, our river water, that also includes our springs, and then our SVP and ULS water. Um, SVP is our Strawberry Valley Project water, and also the ULS water is the Utah Lake System water. Um, our well water, as you can see, we've got quite a bit of rights in all three of them. And a few things that I want to point out is this is what, the rights that we have available to us during a drought year. If you can see that our well water rights and our SVP, ULS water, they don't change whether it's a drought year or not. But you'll see that quite a bit of our river water is depleted from this. When it is a drought year, we're not able to pull as much out of the river. Um, these are our needs right now currently in a normal year. So in a normal water year, you can see that we have a small amount of water that we do pull from our wells. I just want to give you a little bit of history on that. So even though we have quite a large amount of wa, of well water rights, we don't like to use our wells. We don't like to pump our wells for quite a few reasons. Um, one of them is even just the pumping costs is quite expensive to the city. But as you can see, that even during a normal year, we do use some well water, and that's mostly just to keep our wells running, keep fresh water there if we need to find any problems that we're having with a well, so that if we do need those, then we're ready for them. Uh, and then as you can see, we use quite a bit of river water, but then in a drought year, our river water goes down and our well use goes up. So again, we don't like to use our wells. We only use that kind of as a reserve or a backup for our system. And then, um, I do want to point out that some of these water rights are earmarked for potential industrial needs. So I just wanted to show you a couple of, um, slides on our drinking, or a slide on our drinking water. This is the difference between 2019 and 2020. We used about 5% more drinking water in 2020 than we did in 2019. Um, part of this reason would be that we do have a few areas throughout town that do not have pressurized irrigation. We've got, uh, the northeast side of town, we have the Leland area, and we have a small area up by the PI reservoir that we don't have pressurized irrigation to. And then also this is because we had about a 2.7% growth rate in 2020. So, but as you can see, in 2019, 2020, our drinking water rights, our drinking water needs don't really change whether it's a drought year or not. Our pressurized irrigation use between 2019 and 2020, we had an increase of 30% more water. Um, our ULS connection, as you see here, is quite a bit larger use than it was in 2019. And this is because we are able to start taking our SVP water through our ULS connection as well. This connection allows the water to be gravity-fed into our system, which helps decrease the need to pump water into our system. And then this also allows for quite a bit of savings to the city. With our ongoing projects that we have right now that will be completed this year, that will also eliminate quite a bit of need for additional pumping. And so this will, um, help decrease our, our expense for pumping costs. I better go back, I, I won't steal Josie's thunder yet. As you can tell, that with this presentation, that we have an adequate supply of water for Spanish Fork City even in a drought year. Um, I attribute this work to our Public Works Director, our current and our past Public Works Director. They have worked very hard to secure water rights for the current and future needs of the city. And although we do have an adequate supply of water, oh, I didn't even go over this last slide, did I? This just shows you, um, historically what our water rights have been. As you can see, we used quite a bit less in 2019 because it was such a high precipitation year. But, and like I said, although we have an adequate supply of water, um, and we are in a drought year, it does not exempt us from water conservation. And so I will turn the time over to Josie, and she will go over the conservation efforts that are ongoing and continuing. Thank you, Marlo.
So the state has set some goals for our region and statewide. Our region I've put here, let's see, Provo River. The goal that we have for 2030 is to have 179 gallons of water used per capita per day. According to our meter data from 2020, we're currently at 203 gallons per capita per day. Uh, you'll note that according to the statewide goal, we're doing pretty well. Um, but to reach our regional goal, we want to decrease our usage by about 13.4%. I'm gonna detail a little bit today what we're doing as a city to reach that goal and decrease our usage. One of the first things we've done is to meter our pressurized irrigation system. In cities where water usage is un-metered, it often makes it feel like the resource is unlimited. Um, sort of an ignorance is bliss philosophy. By actually assigning a usage, a number to your consumption, consumers can be, um, really more aware of what they're using. Studies have shown that simply by metering usage, you can decrease consumption by 25%. So simply, knowledge is power to, to, you know, awareness is how we can create change. So metering on its own is very effective. We've also accompanied that with tiered rate structures to put some financial incentive beyond, um, behind conserving water. We do a base rate that's dependent on the meter size. Beyond that, we have tiers where we do an increased fee for each 1,000 gallons used per tier. In charging people more for their water, we really wanted to provide greater access to information so that people can know exactly how much they're using, they can meet their goals. We've done this through our Smart Meter project, where we have replaced old meters with more accurate meters that read down to one gallon. And then we've also created a customer portal where you can see that information down to the gallon of how much you're using and see if you're on target to reach the goals that you would like to. This technology has also been helpful in detecting leaks because, uh, low-level consumption that shows up in the evening or while you're on vacation can often indicate that there are leaks in your household. So that helps to, um, notice that. This project has been made possible through the Water Efficiency Grant. Um, CUWCD has helped us with that, and the Smart Water Grant, both of which were received in 2019. Those grants also have helped fund our smart irrigation, um, program, the controllers that Those grants also have helped fund our smart irrigation program, the controllers that we've allowed residents to sign up to receive. Those have been an effective means in conserving water. Thus far, we've installed 2,850 throughout the city and have plans to install 450 more this summer. I have this figure here that has our most recent data from 2020. I have a control group that had no controller in either 2018 or 2020, so nothing changed. This is just what their behavior showed. And if you compare that to a group that received a controller in 2019, you'll see that they used a lot less pressurized irrigation. So this program's really effective, and we're grateful for the grants that have also allowed us to, to carry out this program. The Water Department is also doing a leak detection program where they use acoustic technology and attach sensors to pipes that can read vibrations and see if there's a leak somewhere along the pipeline. They can actually tell you the location of the leak as well. The Water Department is going area by area to different parts of the city with the goal that every year they'll cover the whole city. This has been great because it allows you to repair leaks quickly before there's a very big issue, which would get rid of any unnecessary water loss through the leaks, as well as prevent any damage to our road facilities with those pipes bursting, so we can avoid that risk. The golf course is also doing their part by installing new irrigation. These are more efficient sprinkler heads, so they'll hopefully save them some money, about $40,000 per year, and they hope to install them this fall. Something neat about those controller, the sprinkler heads is that they can water independently of each other. So if you have a dry spot, you can water just that one area instead of the whole larger area, which would help to conserve water. Finally, we've just been really encouraging residents to conserve water by giving educational material resources on our website, as well as posts on our social media sites. Those give conservation tips, serve as a great reminder to keep doing our best to save water. We've been doing those ever since the state drought declaration. So we just encourage us all to keep doing our best to conserve water. Thank you for your time.
Josie, I have a quick question.
Yes.
On those Rocio systems, you said there's 450 available for this year. Have they all been reserved, or are there more available if residents wanted to reach out and get one?
There are several.
Okay, and would they just call and ask for...
The site is on...
Okay, perfect.
...all the cases there, please. Quite good.
Okay, this was awesome. Thank you for putting it together. I think it's super helpful. I, I read an article that Lehigh City Council this week are putting some major restrictions on their city, and we are not needing to do that. But just because we have water, I love Marla, that you said that does not mean we can just go wild with our water. We still need to be very conscientious. So thank you for your hard work on this and educating us and the residents.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. I, I don't know who's, so, and this might be because I kind of know, so our U L S water, are we going to continue to increase our use of that?
So the Utah Lake System water, which is actually part of Strawberry Reservoir, when they expanded the reservoir, they called that expansion U L S water. And, and we have a contract to eventually receive 8,000 acre feet of that water. What we're doing right now is taking about 500 acre feet additional each year so that we can gradually be, become dependent on that water. So there's even more water than what you saw on the board. There's another about 7,000 acre feet of water that will add to that, that portfolio of water, if you will.
So the conditions of our wells and springs, I know they're producing, this year's going to be a strain on them.
Yeah.
They're in good condition.
Yeah, they're, they're doing well. With the drought, the springs, the, the production goes down with the drought, and, and we see those trends. The wells, we, we haven't noticed that. It'd take an extended drought and a lot of pumping to do that. We like to treat the, the wells, the underground aquifer as, as a big reservoir. And because we don't use it that much, it stays pretty full.
Pretty constant.
Yeah.
Is, do we have plans to get P I to the northern end? I know it's a business area, but, and I, I don't know if we've talked about that, to get P I down there so that they're not using the culinary water?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. So right now, the jail and all the businesses in that area are not on pressurized irrigation. There's also an area in the Leland area that doesn't have pressurized irrigation, and then a small area up near the reservoir, which is just too close to the reservoir. You couldn't get pressure there. We, we probably won't ever get pressurized irrigation there, but these three areas are kind of in our, in our sights for, how can we turn them over to pressurized irrigation? I just reviewed the 90% design of the north end pressurized irrigation project, which would bring all of that area under pressurized irrigation. And that's, that's quite a bit of landscaping around the jail and those areas. And then we're seeing the Leland area get pressurized irrigation as more development occurs, so.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Marla, Josie. Thank you.
So, so I would, I would like to thank Marla and Josie as, as well. Marla does such a great job in tracking our water rights. She knows more about water rights than a lot of water right engineers do. And, and she's really just done a great job of tracking information coming from the State Engineers Office and, and really working with the different irrigation companies to make sure that, that we have every bit of water accounted for and not lost. And, and really, that's a big issue with cities is, is really perfecting their water, making sure that they don't lose it or, or have it, have it basically for non-use or non, without perfecting it, then you, then you really can't use it. We have to do change applications and all of that process to, to be able to even use it to begin with. And then Josie here has done such a great job for the city. She, her senior class project was to analyze the smart irrigation controller project that we're doing, and she's been analyzing that all along and really helping us with that. And she does such a great job in planning and master planning our, our water, wastewater, transportation, all of our systems, and just trying to make sure that we'll be prepared for the future. So we're really glad to have her as one of our, our engineers in our, in our engineering division, so.
So just a suggestion, and I don't know, basically maybe with Stacy, I've, I've had the opportunity to be to every spring, see the pump houses, see the drain fields and that stuff. That's something that I think's important, that we should know where they're at, just not by driving by them, but maybe an invite by invitation to each one of us. I have a pretty good connection there that I can go see these pumps and the wells and stuff, and I've done that very often, and so I know where they're at. And I know where the wells are and the things that we have that Spanish Fork uses, and I'm very fortunate that we have kept those over the years and had previous camps. But it's, it's, I think we should know where they are, and it's nice to know them. And if you have an opportunity, I would invite you to do that, to go see those.
Nick, put up that picture, talking about going and seeing things. Anybody know what that is?
That's portals.
That comes from Strawberry.
That used to be the first, that was the first one we had that came there. They went in about three years ago and repiped it, a different route. When they built that tunnel to Strawberry, a crew started on this end, another crew started on the other end. How close do you think they came when they met? They were off two inches. Now, when the new guys did their tunnel with all their GPS and all that fun stuff, how close do you think they came?
A lot of feet.
22 feet they were off. So I can't remember when that was built, but back then, pretty amazing what the old timers did and with what they had there. So had the opportunity to go up and see this last week, and it was pretty cool.
It's fascinating how they dug those tunnels through the mountains
Yep.
To Strawberry Reservoir. And, and, and people don't realize this, but it's the farmers here in Spanish Fork, Salem area that all got together and decided to build the original Strawberry Valley Project and do that initial tunnel, so.
It was pretty cool, pretty cool.
Well, yeah.
We drove over to Strawberry Marina, had lunch, and then drove back. So it was pretty cool. All right, thank you. Kudos to Chris and his staff.
I've heard.
When people ask us about our water situation, I said, by the decision our, the city made years and years ago to pressurize irrigate and the good control that they've had, we're in good shape water-wise, where other cities are really struggling. And so I, I want to let you know how much we appreciate that.
Just, just one last thing, I'm sorry, Mayor. We get a lot of questions whether the city's going to have restrictions on water, and I, I think that's an important thing to talk about. I kind of have a philosophy on restrictions. If you say, well, you can only water Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, then you for sure water Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And so historically, what we have done is, is just education, setting up a fair tiered rate structure where you pay for every bit of water that you use, and, and we've avoided restrictions and just kind of trust the residents to, to use what they need when they need it. And, and that makes a lot more sense rather than being restricted at a certain time. So we don't anticipate any water restrictions this year, not because we want to encourage waste, it's just we feel like it makes more sense to water when it's time to water, not be restricted to certain days.
Yeah, we, we definitely want to have everyone conserve water because we are in a drought, and so we really want to do that. All right, consent items.
Make a motion to approve the consent items with myself recusing from item F.
Motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilman Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, fiscal 2022 budget. There's Kent.
This a couple times, more times. Okay, as far as the budget, tonight is the public hearing night, and there's actually going to be four different public hearings. We're going to walk you through this, so my presentation will stop and start four different times because there's four different public hearings. First one we're going to talk about is the city budget, and the second one's the transfers. Third, it'll be the R D A, and the fourth will be the local building authority, a new entity that was created. So I'm going to briefly go through some of these. This document, the budget, it's 112 pages, it's a public document, it's found on our city's website for the past month. It's been available there for the public to look at, and they may be here tonight to ask some questions about the budget that we have during the public hearing. It's a large budget this year, $170 million. It's the largest budget we've ever had in the city. Mostly because of some bonds that were issued for some large capital projects. It's the beginning of the sewer, sewer plant, sewer trunk station, lift station and trunk lines, also the library and the city library hall building, those bonds and construction is going on. There's also water bonds that were issued, and those funds are being expended. So there are very large ones. This budget does not include a property tax increase, but there are, as listed in the fees part of the, the budget, some utilities that were being adjusted and increased. One would be the sewer rates, gradually over the next couple of years will be increasing in order to pay the, the debt service on those bond issues. A couple of things that have changed since the last time we met, the budget was presented. No dollar amounts in the budget as far as revenue and expenses are changed, but on the fees tab, there are a couple of these items I want to bring up that will be included in the fees tab. One is at the airport, it'll be a 10% adder if the airport hangar fronts on Main Street. The weed abatement increased their admin fee, those takes care of the weeds and yards and stuff that the city has, has to mow for residents that don't take care of their, their yards. So there's an increase in that administration fee. Garbage rates are confirmed that they will increase from 1290 to 1335, and the, and the blue recycle can will go from 646 to 685. And also, there'll be a new fee for ag protection removal fee as, as far as land development is, property is being adjusted or removed from that protection fee to be developed. There's some legal work, and the city has to help perform with that in order to allow those residents to, to prepare their, remove their land out of that protection fee. And so that's an addition, a, a new fee that the city will be charging. Again, those are some of the big projects that causes it to be $170 million. Couple of things we'll talk about in the transfer section as far as transferring money from the Water Department to the golf course. We'll talk about that in the transfer section. That's, that's much I'm going to discuss on the public hearing. I'll let you open up for a public hearing, let the public talk about it and ask any questions.
Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Menon Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in a public hearing. Anyone who would like to come up and address the council and the mayor about this budget, you're welcome to come up. No, there's no burgers. It's in the snack shack.
No burgers, no taxes on that. Yeah, we won't talk about that. First of all, thank here for your service to
Thank you.
Not only our community, but to the country and continuing that, that's, that's awesome. Great experience for you to be able to go do that, so thanks.
State your name.
Oh, Matt Barber, sorry.
There you go, thank you.
And then to see the local teams in here and the Memorial Day event, three big events right this weekend that those of us who live here and have seen that before, I mean, that's why we live here, it's, it's awesome. That was a great weekend, so. Thanks to, for the water presentation, I thought that was, I think if we showed our water rights versus other cities, we wouldn't want to do that, that would be embarrassing to them. Thanks to the, those who, the leaders before, I mean, those, most of those rights were secured 25, 30 years ago, that, that's amazing, so, great job on that. I'm going to keep it short, sweet, $170 million, that's a lot of money. I wish there was as much excitement as about baseball and softball as, for the budget. I mean, I watch this every year, and it looks like, unless I'm wrong, I'm probably the only one here to talk about $170 million worth of expenditures. Lot of good things in there. But I noticed on the management page, it says, "This budget proposes to find, to fund the mayor and council's priorities." And then it also talks about the vision of the mayor and the council members. So I have two questions. One for any one of you to answer, you guys decide, and then the other one would be for each of you individually. So the first one is, how does that vision and priorities planning happen with the mayor and the council? You know, is it a one-time meeting? If you'll just kind of outline how that works.
I'll jump in, because I was actually going to address this. Friday night, I was talking to a resident, and they saw our budget presented to us, $170 million, and they said, "None of you said anything." And I said, "Let me tell you how that works. It's a 12-month process that we're all communicating with our department heads about their needs. They either present us in a meeting like this, but back in February, every single year, we also meet for like 48 straight hours. It's, it's like a fire hose of information." So Chief Adams lets us know, "Hey, we're growing at this rate, I really could use three officers." We share a victim advocate with Salem. Keep in mind that pretty soon, we're going to need our own full-time victims advocate. Then the library, "Hey, we need more of this." Or Streets and Sewer, "Hey, we're going to need a new sewer plant. Heads up, three years in a row, three years ahead of time, we're going to need to start planning." So we kind of get like all of that information, and then once we get all of it, we kind of talk amongst ourselves and what, what is important? We need to narrow down. We can wait another year on a victim's advocate, maybe Chief Adams, you get one officer this year, because we have to also build a park for a new development. So that's like my vision of how So that's like my vision of how it all, they tell us like their priorities, and then we also share what our priorities are. So we kind of meet in the middle.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Great. So the next question would be, you brought it up. Individually, what's your top one or two priorities individually for the community? So, because back to your same point, I think it's good for the citizens to hear what the council and mayor's priorities are.
For me, not in this budget, but one of the upcoming budgets, so.
Either way, I mean.
For me, this is the last year of Spanish Fork swimming pool. And I think that that's going to be very important for us to address soon. So a new swimming pool, whether that's a standalone swimming pool or if that looks like a rec center with a pool in it.
Okay. And that was my last question, so I'll let you ask or answer. Thanks again.
I'm not the only one answering, am I?
Oh, he wanted each one of us to answer, so I guess you're next, Gary.
Oh, let's see. Individually, top one or two priorities?
He doesn't have any anymore. He's leaving.
I passed my priorities on to someone else. No. Safety is probably my number one priority. Working with Chief Adams over the past three terms, looking at their needs, making sure they have not only the manpower for the different rotations. Someone gets sick, COVID, he and I spoke at length during COVID, for example, and those that tested positive and how that pulled them out of rotations and the difficulty of their jobs, especially with a similarity to my other profession, military. Looking at, one, how are they serviced with the equipment and time and personnel that they need to be able to service the city of Spanish Fork? This year, Spanish Fork was the safest city, was that Utah?
Yep.
Yes, safest city in Utah. And a large part of that is because of these meetings that we have, the discussions we have as a mayor and council, and working with the department heads, in this case specifically Chief Adams, to be able to make sure that they have the funding, the resources, but then educating and talking to citizens in a way that not to detract or, you know, I, I'm not on the council too much longer. I'll just say it bluntly. Blue lives matter, plain and simply. I'll just say it like it is. Police officers are citizens in Spanish Fork or Salem or other areas that they might live. There's a job that they do. But it does not mean that they are any less human than anybody else that does any other particular job in any city or any county anywhere. And so making sure that they have the resources to do their job properly, to be able to keep us safe, regardless of how that entails, would be top one or two priorities. I've taken enough time, that has been and will continue to be my number one priority.
Good question. Thanks for, thanks for good answers, I think. But good question and good for coming on a $170 million budget. I think the vision, or excuse me, the document that coincides with the budget does spell it out pretty good, where it says you'll notice that this budget is heavy on capital projects. In total, there are over 79 million budgeted for capital or one-time projects. So those don't just happen overnight. The public is invited to be involved in every step of those processes. There are years, take years to culminate to where it is now. I wish we didn't have to spend $80 million on a sewer plant, but we have to. We have to at some point. And that's not told to us by, you know, ourselves, thinking, obviously, you know, that we want to still flush the toilet and turn on the sink faucet. But a lot of that's even mandated by the federal government and by their standards and saying, hey, here's the standards that you have to be a part of now. And so, again, Chris's department taking that on and showing us study after study, but also being very deliberate in saying, hey, here's how we can do this in the most efficient way, both cost-wise and, you know, interruption-wise to our city facilities. So really, what you have from a $100 million budget, just rounding figures of last year, when I'm telling seventh graders in their, you know, history class up at Diamond Fork, it's a $100 million budget. The difference this year is a $170 million budget, or 180, close to that, that really a lot of that comes with the sewer treatment plant being undertaken and library hall next door. So some things that you'll be able to see, touch, feel. I don't know how much you'll want to see or touch down at the sewer plant. But it is, it's something that as a resident, you will see. But again, without a whole lot of noticeable increases, you can talk to your neighbors and friends that are in different communities that are pretty close to us, they're building new sewer treatment plants or just have them getting done. And their sewer bill doubled, nearly doubled. And we've planned, leaned into this curve for years of trying to do this in an effective way. And so really, those two things, priorities, I think we all agreed as a council and mayor to, that those were priorities of a new library, which is obviously underway, and the new sewer treatment plant, which is, which will soon be underway. And that's the big bulk of this increase in a budget to get up to that number. My vision for Spanish Fork, obviously, the mayor says it well in his statement for Spanish Fork, with everyone in these shares of pride and progress, of being proud of where we came from, but looking forward to the progress that comes. And I think part of that, for me at least, as a vision, is the economic circumstances. That comes from my years of serving in the Chamber of Commerce and being in business in Spanish Fork. But I think the healthy communities that make it such an attractive place to live, obviously, the parks and rec are a big department of that, the trails, the beauty that we try to keep and the hometown feel that you try to keep as well. But the economic vitality of a community is very important. And so that's a vision I have every time we're talking about the budget, every new year is what's in there for us to make sure that that remains healthy and vibrant in our city. And it's not, it's not a whole bunch of secrets, but I'll tell you, both these coaches, if you were to ask them, that Easton Romero kid could mash, and he hit home runs like, like it was nothing. But everybody else, nearly every softball or baseball game that I watched this year, they hit singles. And they just hit single after single after single. And it added up in runs to where the girls were mercy rule, everybody. And they didn't have to do anything except hit it through the infield and just get a single and, or beat it out, run hard. And that's what Spanish Fork does, I've said it before, but we hit singles. And that's what this budget, I feel like, is for me, is just taking somewhat of the hand you're dealt and then adding into it great planning by years and decades, like you mentioned, Matt, of people before us, and keying on those and just continuing to hit singles. So that's the budget for me this year.
Councilman Argal.
Thanks, Mayor. Number one, safety and quality of life in Spanish Fork and keeping Spanish Fork alive as we continue to grow. Number two is to keep these guys from raising our property tax the best I can. And they've done a pretty good job considering what we've put on the docket as far as we need to build.
All right. For me, as you can tell, it was interesting. I found an old Chamber of Commerce brochure from 1959. And in there, it says, "We are so excited for our new, modern sewer treatment plant." So back then, so you can see how long that sewer treatment plant's been there. And so I thought it was pretty interesting. So we definitely needed that upgrade on that sewer treatment plant. And so that was a priority that's been discussed. Libraries is, was a priority that we felt we needed for a community. You know, every viable community has a wonderful library. And so that's what we need there, too. As has been stated, everything that we have here in Spanish Fork makes it a great place to live. You know, we've got the new hospital. We've got the development that's going on all up there, our new fire station. All these things have been planned for, for years and years, and it just doesn't happen. It's the planning that we have. We plan for growth. I was in a conversation with one of our congressmen, and he asked me about growth. And I said, "The one thing about growth is you've got to embrace growth. You've got to plan for it. The only way you're going to stop growth is kids quit having, quit having kids, having babies." And it's not going to happen. So it's coming, you know? And so you need to plan for it. And Spanish Fork's done a great job of planning for growth, planning for down the road. That's what we're known for, is we don't react, you know, we plan for things. And so I think every little thing that we do here in Spanish Fork with this budget, as we meet with all the department heads, like I say, this is a year-long process. It just didn't happen. Everybody said, "Well, why didn't you say something during the meeting?" Well, we've said something all year long about it. We've put a lot of input into it and listened to all of our department heads and done the best we can as representing you, the people. That's what we were elected here for, is to represent you. And that's what we're trying to do the best we can. So those are some of my priorities.
Mayor, if I may jump in just very briefly, thank you. Just in looking at this, well, actually, just being able to think and listen to everyone, I think one thing, there's one distinction that needs to be made. And for those that are watching and those that will watch or listen at some point in the future, I think the question posed is a great question. Individually, top one or two priorities, what are they? I think in the discussion tonight, being that we're talking about this year's budget, we've heard certainly what those priorities are. This question could be spun or used or asked in many different ways at different levels. Military, we have a 25-meter target that you generally want to shoot first because that's the one that's going to kill you a little quicker than the one that's 300 meters out. You know, generally speaking, they don't shoot quite as well. And so I think it's important to understand that these are the 25-meter targets that have been discussed, is just what's right out in front. If you were to ask the same question, and that's perhaps a discussion for another time or individually with each of us as a council, but that 300-meter target that would be further out would be being fiscally responsible. The three years that I've been on the council, or three terms, excuse me, the different council members and mayors that I've worked with, that has been something that each member of the council has really worked hardest to be as fiscally responsible with the monies, the tax monies, our monies as citizens that we are called upon to spend and use. You could then look out, you know, at the next target, which would be 500 meters, and it would be to support and defend the principles of the Constitution, support and defend the Constitution. And so it's a wonderful question, I think something that, especially in this political year, certainly for those that were paying attention to last city council, you can file for positions to run for city council. But as you have those conversations, just keep in mind that I think tonight's purposes, at least sound, listening to what was answered, is probably that 25-meter target. And I think if you were to ask each member of the council what that further out target or that 10,000-foot level, the bigger visions and priorities, it would change more than just something that's being built in the next fiscal year or two. So, sorry, Mayor.
No problem, great. Anyone else would like to come up and talk?
Hi. My name's Paul Dayton. I'll just share a few comments on what I saw on the budget. And actually, this is, I mean, this is in the budget, but it's probably more specific to what I found that I've liked here in Spanish Fork. I really appreciate the infrastructure, the spending on infrastructure, the focus on infrastructure. I see it all over the town and the roads and the quality of everything that we see. The pro-growth mentality that I see in the city is really good. And working home for this, from home for this past 15 months, it's been very nice to be able to have everything in town. I gave some comments here before I work at Adobe. It's a great job. It's been a great job to be able to connect to Adobe through the infrastructure that we have for internet here. When I went to high school, I lived in Payson. And it was way back in the late 90s and early 2000s. And we actually knew that over here in Spanish Fork, they had high-quality, high-speed internet way back then, 20 years ago. And I'm thinking, that's still the case here. You look at Lehigh, which has all the big tech buildings and everything like that, and they're only getting around to Utopia right now, which is just insane. Like, so, I mean, I could thank the council for that, but it actually, it was city councils from way back in the day that made those great decisions and built that infrastructure out. And it's made my life today very good. I know you probably hear a lot from citizens who are concerned with growth. They want this place to continue to maintain, be a small town. I might have quite a different opinion on that. I like the growth that I'm seeing here. I feel that the town is vibrant and alive. And I think if we weren't growing, we would be, we should be worried and concerned that we're in a place that could be stagnating. As you look at the rest of the world, I mean, right now, property values are ridiculously high and things like that. But there is a concern that places have where they could be seeing population reductions. And we have no such problem here. I think we need to continue to make this a welcoming city that's opening. And I really want to make sure that my kids can someday afford a house here. So, you know, high-density housing can sometimes be this dirty word. I don't think it's a dirty word. Let's have a variety of housing that we can see for everybody here. So thanks for all the work you've done on that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's John Terrell. And I just basically came this evening so I'd see the workings of the council. It's been, I've been impressed. I've been, and I also wanted to make comment that I went out, my family's all buried in the Spanish Fork cemetery and a couple other cemeteries around. And out of all the cemeteries I went to this last weekend, I was deeply impressed how well they maintained it. I grabbed my weed whacker in case I needed to use it and went out there, and everything's been trimmed up and everything looks so nice. And the cemetery was just in excellent condition. The only comment I'd like to make this evening is, and I think overall that I am just very pleased with the growth and the fact that people want to come to Spanish Fork and people want to raise their families here. The only concern I really have is, and I can beat a dead horse all I want, and Steve and Chad know what my dead horse is, but I just think that sometimes, and I don't know what the city's been doing since I haven't been involved with the planning commission to see where they're at on this, and I'm not sure Mike has, but access. I see access being a major issue in this city. I live on a very, very fast-paced road. I'm at 8th North and 4th East. And everybody knows there's been petitions out on that intersection. And Josie's been working on it, and Chris has been working on it. Everybody's been working on it, trying to figure out what they're going to do with it. But that's not the issue I have tonight. I have a, the issue I have tonight is overall and general. I go down Main Street, up and down Main Street, and I can't believe the traffic. I go up and down US 6 and the businesses that we have and the traffic. I go down, I work part-time over at Macy's as the supervisor over there, and I see the traffic down 10th North. I picked up the plans for the city and where they're going out south here and they're building subdivisions. And I have to ask myself, what are the plans? What are we doing as far as road and access? And that's my biggest concern in the city, is getting people from point A to point B without having to continue to have accidents. And to, I don't like to be controlling person, but on the other hand, I think there's some real strong issues that need to be dealt with by the city in those areas. And that's the only comment that I have.
Thank you. I'll address that when we close here. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out and close. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out and close.
Second.
Public comment. A motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As far as addressing your access, starting next summer, there'll be a new interchange starting there between us and Springville that we've been working on for, yep, we've been working on that for almost 10 years. There's a road that's supposed to be coming down. That's ways out. But we're also looking at another interchange on Center Street. So we're trying to get some more. Those are in the works, you know? But it takes time. It's slow. It's slow. But they will start construction on that interchange between us and Springville, out there at the old Santana, and that will help a lot because that will take a lot of that traffic out. And then as we get the traffic here for Center Street, and also we're working on the frontrunner to get down here, you know, that will eliminate a lot of that traffic. So, yeah, there's in the works. It's just, we've been, ever since they did the ICOR, you know, we've been working, trying to get those interchanges for us. That's on the table right now, so they're looking at that. So, yeah, so they're looking at that, trying to see how that would work. Yeah. Yeah, so, because that's going to be a big area up there, so. All right. Kent, come on back.
Right. This is number two. So there is no motion on the, today's just gathering information, and the next week, or next council meeting in two weeks will be the item to approve the budget, the city budget that we're just talking about.
People in between that time can contact us, contact your office.
Ask any questions they'd like, if there's something that was missed or something like that. Okay, the second one is enterprise public fund. Public hearing transfers from enterprise funds to other funds. Several years ago, the state legislature created some criteria, some requirements we have to do as the city, is if we ever transfer money from a enterprise fund, which is our utility funds, to any other fund, then we have to go through certain hoops as far as providing information about what it is. This kind of is a color-coded example of the different types of transfers that take place inside the city budget. There are some different types of funds, and I'm not going to teach governmental accounting right now. Just to let you know, there is a general fund, which holds most services are inside the general fund or services that are not found in some other fund are all found in the general fund. We have capital project funds, and we have down here in the bottom, the enterprise funds. And so we're required, if we ever transfer money out of, as a gift, out of the enterprise funds to any other fund, we need to have a public hearing to discuss it. So I've made it larger here so you can see what items that we're talking about right here. And mostly, what we're going to talk about is the light green ones right here is all that the state legislature is requiring us to have a public hearing about. But you can see there are other transfers that take place, but the legislature wants us to talk specifically about our enterprise funds right here. Okay? We had a newsletter go out the 1st of May, and as part of that requirement of that newsletter is we need to send this letter right here that talks about these transfers. And those are the dollar amounts and what information about each transfer was. So this is mailed to every customer that receives a utility bill inside, as this full-page part of that city newsletter. Back to these transfers. Well, as far as what this transfer is, it talks about transfers that are going from these enterprise funds to the general fund. So those are the dollar amounts that are going to be transferred to the general fund. In addition to that, the electric department has been funding part of the debt service on the police station for 10, 11 years, somewhere around there. And so that amount right here has been going on for about 10 years. And in 2027, that debt service on the new public safety building will be paid off, and that transfer will no longer happen. This year, there's another, a new transfer as far as transferring money from the water fund to the capital projects funds to help on the golf course. There may be some questions about that, but we have done the public notice that we are transferring funds from the water fund to the golf course capital projects fund. And this is to help them in their sprinkling system. And also, that process will save a substantial amount of money of water usage and the ineffective or inefficient use of water at the golf course right now. So as you can see, the dollar amounts of those transfers, the green right here, this is the amount that each one of those utilities are giving a gift to the general fund to help the general fund fund public safety, libraries, senior citizens, those types of quality-of-life services that even public safety, those types of things that aren't expenses that are used for that. Now, as part of our public hearing today, so we need to give that notice to say what we were going to, what we're going to transfer. And in 30 days from today, we're going to have to put another newsletter, a letter in the newsletter to say what we really did transfer. So there are two letters that we have to send by state law, and residents will see another letter stating about what we did, we will be transferring. Along with that, I need to cover these specific items as part of the legislature's instructions to us. So here are the utility funds that are contributing a gift at this amount, and it's all been advertised, and so those are the amounts for the advertised gifts, which we call a dividend because residents are shareholders in our community. They're shareholders in the utility, which is the public utilities. And so they're giving those, a dividend back to the general fund to provide services to the same persons, for the most part, that are paying those dividends, paying the utility bills. This other line of transfer is called enterprise transfer accounting data by the state legislature name. So we call it indirect services. These are transfers of money that goes from these utility funds in addition to the dividend for services being performed by the general fund for those utilities. For example, legal fees, payroll, payroll things for the electric department, for the water department, for accounting services, engineering services, all the other type of services. The general fund services those departments also, and we assess a fee back to the general fund to cover those. In addition to those, we have the transfer from electric to the debt service for the public safety for $600,000. And then the new one for this year is another, is a $600,000 coming from water that's going to go to a capital projects fund to help the irrigation or the sprinkling system at the golf course. So basically, this next part needs to be discussed in this public hearing is what's the impact to a customer on that transfer? And so what it looks here is, this is the annual revenue stream that comes from each one of those utilities. So the electric department brings in $24 million in revenue, water's almost $7 million. And how many customers they have is right there. And then so the average bill that the customer pays annually is $1,700, based on the monthly of 12 of those is about $148. The annual transfer, taking the transfer that's going to come as a gift, is that transfer right there is how much the impact is for an annual. And it's $11.62 for the electric customer is transferring that to the general fund to help the general fund. Basically, that's the accounting data that we're required to share as far as to the ratepayers in our community that are utility customers and how that transfer, how the funds are being used, be explained in the budget itself.
Is there a grant that's a part of that water?
There is. I'll have to have Chris probably explain a little bit more of what that parts. There are some moving parts on that. Part of it is a gift from the electric department and part of it is a grant from the, go ahead.
So as we looked as a water department on how we could save water through conservation, one of the biggest low-hanging fruit was the golf course. It takes a lot of water to water that golf course. And if we could make it really much more efficient, then that water could then be available to use in the rest of the city. So we worked with the golf course and determined how much water would be saved with a state-of-the-art, efficient watering system at the golf course. And then we took the value of that water in today's dollars and we times that out, and that's where the $684,000 came from, is now the golf course won't need $684,000 worth of water, which then the water department can use for the rest of the city. And so it's kind of a grant, but it pays a great dividend.
How would you class, I mean, 41 million gallons of water a year? Milk gallon jug, just 41 million of those?
It would take a long time to drink that much.
Acre feet. My dad used to always have to explain acre feet to me because I didn't get that. I can't remember how many thousands of acre feet of water this is. What does that translate into as far as savings?
I think it was 120 acre feet. So if you can imagine, acre of land, 120 feet high worth of water. And it's very valuable. It's better to conserve water than it is to go and find more. So I think this is good.
Well said. Well said.
So, back to the, let me go back to this one right here. So if you look down here, you'll see that there's the water transfer right here that's going into the capital projects improvements right here. But the total amount that's going into that is 1.1 million. So we have, if you notice the color, so I've got that color green. That much is coming from water, and we have that much coming from the general fund, which is contributing to that. And part of that is because the success of the golf course itself is going to be funding part of it because COVID turned everybody into pro golfers. So that's how the funding source, it's a big project at the golf course. Some of the funding from the water department, and some of it is going to be from the general fund. And that covers the requirement that I have to, for enterprise fund hearings. So if there's a public like to come.
Thank you. All right. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public would like to come up and address this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a quick comment on this. Showing all those numbers, I think residents could look at that and think, geez, Spanish Fork probably has the highest utility rates in the valley, and they're then just charging us an arm and a leg on our utilities to keep our property taxes low. But in all reality, we are right smack dab in the middle of all of Utah Valley. It's not that Spanish Fork has these, you know, astronomically high rates so we can say we have low property rates. So kudos to, you know, working out these numbers, Chris, especially your department with the water and garbage and everything there because we were right there in the pack with everyone else.
Right. So this is just information again. Perfect.
May I have one comment that I have, just touching on what Stacy mentioned, too, that enterprise funds think of that as, you know, enterprise and a business, and we're all owners of the business, just like Kent always explains up here in a good way. But again, yeah, that's a good graph that we always see. But the alternative is you could sell our power agency. You could have an outside company be your power provider and charge you a rate, and they'd come and tell you what your rate is every single year, and you'd pay it. And you wouldn't be a shareholder of it and enjoy the dividend transfers that we have for so long. Mayor serves on that board of our power agency. We've all been to conferences where it's discussed in detail and learn a whole lot more about this. But I'm grateful that city fathers years ago decided that we are a power city. We control some of our destiny there and get to have great opportunities to fund really timely things in Holy Cow, one of the, you know, what's going to be a tough water year for sure. And here we are, investing $2 million, a lot of money, into our water project to save 41 million gallons of water every single year. So again, an investment, the citizens of Spanish Fork are making the ratepayers, not only the property taxpayers, but the ratepayers because not everybody pays property tax in Spanish Fork that owns ground. But if they have power, they're paying a power rate. So very good stuff, and I'm excited for that, for that project and saving money, so.
All right. Let's move on to new business. Mill Road Roundabout guaranteed max price. Kenny Singh Construction.
Okay, we're excited about this project. Just some quick background. ALA has really a lot of traffic challenges. We get a lot of complaints in Josie's office, and they deal with on all of the congestion right around ALA as school begins and as school ends, to the point where we, about three years ago, put together a steering committee made up of ALA administrators, some engineering staff, the premier charter school traffic engineering company. They had done some 200 studies for charter schools specifically. That company came in and advised. We included UDOT and we, and a bunch of parents from that area. And so we came together as a steering committee, and this company, this consulting, traffic consulting company, presented the best option to solve those ALA traffic conditions. But it hinged on a couple of things. One is a new light at Mill Road and Arrowhead Trail, which UDOT committed to do, and then put it in this last year. The other one is a roundabout and some islands directing traffic on 1100 South and then the roundabout on Mill Road. Well, the roundabout was just too expensive for the city and the school to take on. But as a condition for a development in that area, that developer is able to bring a few hundred thousand dollars to the table to construct that roundabout. ALA was able to bring a bunch of land, and together we're able to fund this project. Now, the budget was 1.3, I think $5 million, and the guaranteed maximum price from Kenny Singh Construction was just over $1 million. So it's coming in under budget so far. We have been able to secure all the land necessary to construct the roundabout and the islands that are needed. So we're kind of excited about this project. It's been a long time in coming, probably four and a half years total. And this is ready to get going as soon as school gets out, which is now. And so one thing that I think is important to know as we proceed with Kenny Singh, they were selected as the CMGC contractor. They did our Center Street project over here from 900 East over to Highway 6 and did an incredible job. Came in on time, under budget, did really good quality work. We were really excited about how that turned out with them and then selected them to do the 8th North and 8th East High T intersection, the signalized High T there where In-N-Out Burger was going to be constructed. In-N-Out Burger attracts a lot of vehicles, and we're very concerned about this. And we put Kenny Singh on a very tight timeline to get that done. put Kenny Singh on a very tight timeline to get that done and, and they were able to get it done a couple of weeks before In-N-Out Burger opened, which saved so much hassle for the whole city, I believe. And they did a great job there. And so we're excited for them to be working on this project, which also has time, tight timeframes. It needs to be done during the summer and, and so we've, we've enjoyed working with them. We're slowly converting them from building schools to doing, you know, transportation stuff. Any questions?
Any questions for Chris? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Mill Road Roundabout Guaranteed Maximum Price and Kenny Singh Construction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go down to B, annexation acceptance for further study, update or moral annexation containing some forty acres located at the intersection of Main Street and Woodland Hills Drive.
Thanks Mayor, just like you said, the properties that we're talking about are just north, in fact adjacent to the intersection of Woodland Hills Drive and Main Street on what would then be the, the farthest, I guess, point south in the city if the properties end up being annexed. I kind of hope you don't remember this, but you've seen this proposal a couple of different times before in different forms. Most recently, it was within the last couple of months when the properties that are included in the proposal now that are on the west side of Main Street were part of a proposed annexation. Really, what's before you tonight is just the inclusion of properties as well that are on the east side of Main Street. So this proposal that's before you would supplant an application that we've been reviewing, a petition that you accepted for further study, like I said, within the last couple of months, taking all of the area that is proposed to be annexed from eighteen acres to about thirty-six acres. And as was the case before, staff recommends that the council accept this petition for further study.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve annexation acceptance for further study, the updated moral annexation containing some forty acres located at the intersection of Main Street and Woodland Hills Drive.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Okay. Senior citizen advisory board appointment. Ruth Ann Nielsen, I'd like to propose her as a board of appointment.
Need a second or do we just all in favor?
No, you, I don't think.
Okay.
I would like to appoint her.
Well, since I'm.
So someone has to make the motions.
I hang out with the senior centers and I've been in their advisory board meetings with Bronco Hunter. I move to accept the mayor's recommendation of advisory board appointment for Ruth Ann Nielsen for the senior center.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. So that passes. Item D is going to be pushed to next council meeting, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so push that. All right, fiscal year 2022 RDA budget.
Adjourned.
Adjourned. We need to adjourn to the RDA.
I move we adjourn to the redevelopment agency.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in RDA.
Okay, one of the hats you get to wear is an RDA hat. In a few minutes, you'll also be the LBA hat, so, but this is the RDA hat. Talking about the RDA budget, there are different areas called redevelopment areas. The RDA also stands for redevelopment agency. The areas that we have in our town right now, the north industrial area is, its life is, is expired twenty years and there are funds that are collected in the north industrial still to be spent, but you can see there's no more increment coming in there. Kirby Lane is done. Corona is sales tax, so it's not property tax. Wasatch, the windmills, it's over also, so we're not receiving there, but there's still some money left in those areas to be spent. Sierra Bonita is the young living area, so that one is still active. It's our only active that's by property tax and Corona is the only one that's active by sales tax. So if you total up our budget in these RDA areas, our RDA agency has a budget this year of one point nine million dollars, which is, this graph shows what that is made up of, of the different areas that we have. As we look at the budget that shows up in the document, in the budget document, one of the pages in there, this is our RDA, so it shows the revenue stream from the increment that comes. And so this is that same column, so one point nine seven seven is the budget for two thousand twenty-two as far as the expenses and the revenue for that. So this is now a public hearing when you open the public hearings for comment about the RDA.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come talk about the RDA budget? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Information? Okay.
Hey Kent, these RDAs that, I know, I think you've answered this already, these RDAs, these have closed and still have money. What do we do with this money? What can we do with this money?
Be spent on infrastructure or projects within a geographic area. And so they're defined what can be done. So the, this north industrial one has about two million dollars left in it, anticipating around the airport, around, it runs from, it's a long skinny one, runs around the front edge of Main Street, misses a couple of pieces like Longview Fiber or Capstone, they're not in it, but the other stuff around it is. If we need development at the, at the airport, it can be used for some, some of the area down there. Shopko's building is in that area, so it could be used in maybe helping that.
So it has to be used within that area?
A geographic area. Kirby Lane is, started out with Kirby Lane and then it was Alumax and Hedro is the one that's there now.
But there's nothing left in it. It's just.
It's gone. Because all the improvements that's out there, it, it exhausted all the money that was used, that was gathered in that one.
Okay, thanks Kent.
Okay, I need, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to our local building authority.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in L.
Now you've got the LBA, LBA hats on.
Yeah.
And that stands for local building authority. This entity was created to help in the funding and building of the new library hall, which is being built next door here. So in this hearing is the opportunity for the public to comment about that entity called the local building authority. In our case, the building is the library hall building that's next door. Here's the budget. It's a new fund because the LBA was just created a month, two or three months ago. On that, so we have our budget right here, we're going to, on the revision of revision number three, which you'll see here for this year's budget, in two weeks, you'll see numbers inside there because we're going to propose creating, moving that budget into this one for two thousand twenty-one. But tonight's hearing is for two thousand twenty-two's amount. I'll walk you through a couple of these numbers. And so this number right here is an expenditure of what is going to be spent on the building. So I put a little bigger written over here. So it's, it's bond money that's being spent for the construction. Another expenditure here is the principal and interest payment, which is, needs to be paid on the bond. Our first payment is one point two million dollars for that. Where that revenue comes from, last year we had a property tax increase last year for this and it's going to gather eight hundred and forty thousand in property tax and then there'll be an assessment for, as part of that building is the utility office, which does all the billing for all of the utilities. And so they're going to pay a portion of the building costs that covers the new offices for the finance department. And that's going to cover there. And so the bond proceeds is the amount of money that we're thinking we're going to spend in this twenty-two's budget. We'll see as we get closer in where those expenditures are going to take place. The bond issue was for twenty million and so some of it's going to be spent in this year and some of it's going to be spent in next year's and then still final sum probably spent in twenty-three's budget also. So by the time we get to the end of twenty-three's budget, hopefully we're in the building and spent all the bond proceeds and everything's good and this, from then on, this fund will be run as far as making the bond payments for the building. And so it'll be a small fund, but it'll be a special revenue fund that will account for the property tax that comes in and the utility assessments that will pay for the building. Okay? So now you can open a public hearing and get comment on that.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Let's see, we are in a public hearing on this.
No.
I make a motion to go into public hearing for the LBA budget fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to, from the public, like to address this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Information only? Okay.
Motion to reconvene back to.
Oh, yes, yes. Perfect. I thought you was going to pull a Brandon on me.
I could.
Yeah.
Motion to reconvene back to city council meeting, sorry.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
So before we go to the discussion, I just want to say something about all that we've done here with the budget. This has been a, kind of a marathon, right, going through these different public hearings associated with the budget for, as, as has been said, a very large budget year. But I want to express appreciation to Kent for the clarity with which he operates this process and, you know, clarity and even transparency and, and just efficiency as he works through these issues. He is critical for the work that we do and I really appreciate the work that, that Kent does. And this past year, as we bonded for these projects that is Councilman Mendenhall and some of his comments made, they didn't come quickly, right? The library project, we've been talking about building a new library for more than five years. We've been talking about the sewer treatment plant for five or more years as well. And this year, due to circumstances in the interest market, we were able to take advantage of low interest rates and save the residents some five million dollars over the next twenty years, being prepared to bond like we were. And with the financial, the financial health of the city, we're, we were able to receive for a city of our size, ratings, or if you will, credit scores from, from the rating agencies that are really, really good. Our credit rating could be better, I think, really only if we were larger. And so that again is in, in large part due to a lot of the work that Kent does as well as, and specifically for these issues, Chris and his department. And so I want to express my gratitude to them for the work that they did and, and the foresight that they had in getting us ready for those. And then as you tackled these issues, not only for the last five years, but seeing that writing on the wall as a mayor and council and saying, let's do it, let's, let's capture these bonds right now. Saving five million dollars in interest rates is huge and I don't think we, I don't think we can celebrate that success enough. I just wanted to make, make mention of that as we've been spending our time today talking about the budget. Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, we're going to have a little discussion. Vaughn is going to come talk to us about this issue that Kira created for us. So the procedure that we have to follow on that.
First, I just want to say congratulations again, Kira. I mean, we'll be sad to lose you, but you're moving on to a good opportunity and good job there.
Thank you.
And thanks for all you do for us, so. So with the vacancy on the council and that will occur on the fifteenth, when he finishes his last meeting, or sixteenth, fifteenth, okay, fifteenth, that's right. We need to, the statute, the state statute provides that we have to do a fourteen day notice period. So since we know that the, the vacancy will occur on that date, we can start the noticing tonight or tomorrow and get that, that timeline running. In the notice, we have to specify a deadline for when interested people can come in and submit their name for consideration. And so we're going to specify June fifteenth at five PM as the deadline so that any time during that fourteen day period, any, the notice period, anyone can come in and submit their name. June fifteenth at five PM. Let's see here, the meeting, in the notice, we'll have the special meeting on June sixteenth at three PM. So that'll be the day after our regular meeting, your regular city council meeting. At that regular city council meeting, we'd like you to adopt a resolution that has the rules or, or not rules, but the procedure for filling the vacancy. The state statute is not very clear about how to fill the process, or how to do the process of filling it. It has just a few things that you have to do, but to make it go smoothly, I've worked with other city attorneys and I've, I've been through this process, I think, four times with a different city. And so I've kind of been through it and I, I think by adopting some rules and so that you will do your process, it'll go more smoothly. So there'll be your rules that you adopt on the fifteenth to, so that when you do that voting, that process on the sixteenth, it'll go, it'll go some, smooth and clean. One thing the statute is clear about is that you have to interview all qualified applicants. So you can't pick and choose among them. You have to interview each person that is qualified that submits their name for consideration. One thing you might want to give me some guidance on is what, how do you want those interviews to go? We can have a couple suggested questions about what do you want us to know about you? What do you see your vision for Spanish Fork is, something like that. Give them a couple of minutes to address both of those questions. And then depending on their responses, you can each ask follow-up questions of that applicant as well. But if you want it, if you want a specific question, let me know and I can put that into the, the resolution for the procedure. After you interview each one, you have to do a first vote. There's, it's a two vote process. The statute is clear, you have to do two votes. The first one, I suggest you do a ranking, so you rank your top three of all the ones that have submitted their names. And after the interviews, I like applicant A, B, and C the best. I like A the best, so I'm going to give that person three points. Your second choice will get two points and your, your third choice will get one point. That way, when we tally those up, we hopefully have two clear frontrunners because the second vote, you have to narrow it down to two and choose between those two. So that's why we want to do a ranked choice like that. We have a clear top two vote getters. If not, then there's a procedure for sorting through those and getting the top two. The last, the second vote is between the top two and that will be simply a roll call vote. You'll say, Councilmember Beck votes for applicant A. And you'll have to specify their name in your, in your, in your vote on the record. If there is a tie, since there will be four council members here, unless, he can't vote because he's now off the council. It's a, yeah, this only happens after a vacancy occurs, so he's no longer on the council. So unless Councilmember Gordon's still on his vacation, then we could have a, we could have a tie. But if you have a two-two tie after that second vote, then the mayor can vote, just like he, he can in any, any issue.
You like voting.
I don't foresee it. There could still potentially be a tie. Like I said, if somebody's not present, somebody gets sick, is on vacation and you end up with a tie, then the statute says you have to do it by lots, which is just by chance. And you can flip a coin, you can, what we've decided might, might work for us is a brand new deck of cards, you have one suit of cards and you have the two applicants that are the top two and they pick a card and whichever one, the high card is the winner. That, to me, is as simple, as, simple and as clear as any other way to do it. I've, I've drawn names out of hat. simple and as clear as any other way to do it. I've, I've drawn names out of hats. I've flipped coins before.
If it was today, I would suggest flipping the coin. That's natural making decision thing.
But after today, it's.
Doesn't that seem like the least democratic way of doing something is by random chance? But, yeah. Anyway, that's what it says. So, those are the, the overall process. I'll, I'll put that into some, into a resolution. That'll be at your next council meeting for your consideration. But if you want a specific interview question, let me know and I'll get that in there.
Okay. Thanks.
So, with that, it's our intent from some discussions with the mayor that you would have the, a special session, a special meeting with the mayor and council on Wednesday, June 16th. So, the, so we will have our next council meeting on Tuesday, June 15th, which would be Councilman Scobes' last council meeting. But then, we would have the special session to fill that vacant seat the next day, Wednesday. And, and from discussions that I, I've had from, direction from the mayor that it would be at 3:00 PM that afternoon.
Yep. Talked to each one of them and they've cleared their schedules for that day.
Okay. So, the next, yeah, come on.
On that is, I should have mentioned that is, the applicants must be present at the meeting. So, it's one of those must be present to win things, I guess.
I like that.
Because you have to interview them in person, so.
Right.
And also, they need to read the requirements of candidacy.
So, we have, we have the declaration, declaration period happening right now for the, the elections, the candidacy declaration period that is actually open today. There is a window of time for people to apply to replace Councilman Scobes or to fill that vacancy that occurs. And in essence, they would, they would apply to fill the vacancy that runs from June 16th until the, the seat gets filled after the election. So, they would be in the seat until, we'll call it January 1st. It's probably January 4th when we, when we have the swearing-in. And so, candidates that want to fill Councilman Scobes' seat would come and apply for that position. Yeah.
To Kent?
To Tara. Yeah.
To Tara? Okay. Oh, I didn't.
Yeah. And so, because there's two declaration periods going on, Tara actually will probably ask something like this. If, if resident Steve Laufson walked in and says, I want to declare to be a candidate, she, she'd probably say something simply, are you here to declare for candidacy for election? Are you here to apply to fill a vacant seat or both? Just so that we're clear what it is they want to do. And chances are, some will say, just for the candidacy declaration, you know, the typical election. Or some might say, no, I only want to potentially fill six months. Or, no, I want to do both. And then, we'll have that meeting on the 16th. So, we'll, the declaration period for election ends on the 7th. The declaration period to fill Kier's seat actually goes 14 days. So, somebody may come in after and they would be able to say, I want to fill Kier's seat. But that person, if they didn't come in during the first seven days, they wouldn't be able to fill, they wouldn't be able to run for election afterwards. They would just fill that remaining seat. With what Vaughn has talked about and what I've talked about, any questions from you on?
It's clear as mine.
Clear as mine. So, yeah, and critical for us, as Vaughn said, is at that next council meeting, giving you the opportunity to set the rules that you want to follow. And so, we'll give you some templates that you can work on and then fine-tune those Tuesday and, and have you, have you approve those.
Great. Now, you can do a call.
Motion to move to close session for land transaction and legitimate.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you for everyone that's here. We appreciate that. We'll stay here.